This time I'd like to call the meeting to order, a regularly scheduled meeting for Monday, August tenth, two thousand nine. Clerk, please take your role.
Councilmember Byrne?
Here.
Councilmember Dorn?
Present.
Councilmember Fisher?
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Here.
Councilmember McCullough?
Here.
Councilmember Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Muller?
Here. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of July twenty-seventh, two thousand nine. Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Byrne, second.
Support.
Supported by Councilmember McCullough. Clerk, please take your role.
Councilmember Byrne?
Here, or yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Here. Yes. I have a problem with my chair, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Presentations, presentation number one.
Joe Vito, President of the Port Huron Neighborhood Housing Corporation, will give a brief presentation.
Mr. Vito.
Mr. Mayor and council people, thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening. My name's Joe Vito, and I am a Senior Vice President and Regional Market Manager for Bank of America Corp. But tonight I come before you in a different role, and that is the President of the Port Huron Neighborhood Housing Corporation. The purpose of my visit is to give you a brief insight into the activities and successes of the Port Huron Neighborhood Housing Corporation. We generally do this on a regular basis, and we haven't had anybody here for the last year or two, and I think it's important because the city of Port Huron plays a major role in the success of this organization. I think we have some slides that are coming up that'll have little points. You can go to the next slide. The Port Huron Neighborhood Housing Corporation was originally formed some eighteen years ago in nineteen ninety-one with three primary focuses. One, to promote homeownership within the city of Port Huron. The second, to contribute to the improvement of the quality of housing stock within the city of Port Huron. And thirdly, to help with the stabilization of neighborhoods and property values within the city of Port Huron. The membership of the Port Huron Neighborhood Housing Corporation consists of three of the local banks, being Bank of America, Chase Bank, and Citizen Savings Bank, all of which have members on the Board of Directors, and myself as President, and Mary Langoff as Vice President from Chase Bank. Additionally, the City Manager is the current City Manager sits on our board on a regular basis. One of the things I want to mention about the Port Huron Neighborhood Housing Corporation is that many times people have confused it with the Port Huron Housing Commission. And although I don't know a lot about their activities, I do know that we are very different. Our mission is to promote homeownership, and my understanding is the Port Huron Commission centers around the use of Section Eight Federal Housing to subsidize low to no-income housing. When we were originally formed in ninety-one, the three local banks contributed one hundred thousand dollars in the form of working capital to the program. That three hundred thousand dollars you'll see later in the slides has been leveraged to do nearly nine million dollars worth of housing projects within the city of Port Huron. We have received a lot of support based on the involvement of the city of Port Huron in the form of federal, state, and local grants. These grants provide for the reimbursement of administrative expenses, and that money goes to the city of Port Huron to support the labor base that we utilize from the city that helps our program. The amount of funds vary each year depending upon the number of grants that are awarded, but traditionally it runs somewhere between twenty-six and thirty-five thousand dollars a year that goes back to the city of Port Huron to reimburse them for their own labor Additionally, we take the proceeds from property sales and reinvest them back into the program to help fund additional projects. And we've leveraged the use of local partnerships, not only with the city but also with the county, local real estate agencies, contractors, businesses, neighborhood associations, and things of that nature. Some of the program features are the fact that we provide homebuyer workshops, and in fact, every one of our homebuyers are required to go through a homebuyer workshop, which teaches them the responsibility of homeownership. Hopefully, we're qualifying these people as being longtime homeowners. Additionally, we provide financial literacy classes, foreclosure prevention seminars, and a host of other seminars that we think might be important to educating the homebuyer. Over time, we've purchased a number of vacant structures, and we've renovated those and resold them to qualified homebuyers. And when I say re-renovate, these buildings are brand-new from top to bottom. If there are foundation problems, they're addressed. All the rough and finished electrical and plumbing is totally redone in the building, new roofs, new windows, new cabinetry, new carpet, everything. They're brand-new homes when they're done. We've done a number of demolitions of side-by-side homes and combined the lots, five that come to mind, and then built a new structure on a single property. We've converted, which our main focus is to convert multifamily residential properties into single-family homes. By deed restriction, we require that the home purchaser occupy that home for at least five years, and it's not allowed to be used as a rental property. So again, we're really promoting homeownership. Our buyers are required to qualify for a conventional mortgage loan, like any of us would have to when they come to buy the home. And by virtue of that, the program is predominantly focused on moderately-income families. So based on the fact of qualifying for a conventional loan, they have to have an adequate down payment, and many times we will work with them to identify homebuyer assistance in the form of down payments and things like that, but they have to qualify for a conventional loan. And that's where we get back to the fact that they are moderately-income family homes. Next slide. Okay. Over the program life, we've done over eight point eight million dollars worth of projects that have been reinvested into the neighborhoods in Port Huron. Of that, there have been ninety blight properties that have been transformed, seventy-five families are new homeowners that probably would not be in that position if it weren't for the program, sixteen danger structures have been demolished. As I said, we've done five redevelopment projects, which consist of the demolition, combination of lots, and reconstruction. Our belief is that the extensive renovations will equate to the long-term value of the property. And as a result, we're hopefully increasing the taxable values of these properties, and we're stabilizing other adjoining property gardens. I'm very proud of the success of the program. We've only had five foreclosures in the eighteen years that the program's been in existence, and we've had four homeowners that moved prior to the five-year period, and that was pretty much driven by a change in their lifestyle, marriage, divorce, death, whatever. We've also partnered with a number of programs in the community, many of which are recognized, the Community Renaissance Area, the Mercy Hospital Neighborhood Preservation, the Old Town Historic District, Court Street Neighborhood, Renaissance South, and the Garfield School Here are some of our before-and-after pictures. The first one is a seven-unit building that was demolished and replaced with a single-family home. One of the things I want to mention, this is quite alarming, we tried to do some homework on this, that property was purchased in two thousand and four by the Port Huron Neighborhood Housing Corporation. From the period between two thousand and nine until our purchase in two thousand and four, the city received and answered twenty-seven complaints on that property. And since we've taken it down and replaced it, there have not been any complaints to the occupant of the home. The next photo is a demolish. This building was taken down. We built a new building there. We set it off in the street a little bit further. As you can see, it's a brand-new home. One of the things I'd like to say is, we know when we turn over a property to a home purchaser, we're turning over a very safe structure to that family. And we know that we have a very well-educated homeowner who understands the responsibilities of owning and maintaining a home over a long period of time. Our next slide. Again, this was a renovation. We've taken a nine-unit rental and converted it into a single-family home. If you look at the red building at that time, you can see towards the back, there was an addition built on it. There was a stairwell that went up to separate and provide an entrance for an upper-level unit. There were two doors in the front of the building. All of that had been removed. Houses had been recited, reconstructed from the inside out. A detached garage was added to the back of the property, and a very fine-looking home for the community. This particular property here that you're looking at, we took down two structures on a single lot and constructed one home. Going back to that prior slide just again, that home, it was a multi-tenant, had thirty-three complaints that the city addressed between the period of nineteen ninety-two and when we acquired that property and resold it in two thousand and three. So again, another value to the city. One more. Some of the awards that the program has received, we've received recognition from the Michigan Municipal League Achievement Award, HUD's Best Practice Award, National Civic League Award, and then, as I said, we've had partnership program presentations and recognition, and this program has been copied in a number of other communities, including Grand Rapids, Lansing, Indianapolis, Traverse City, and a number of Detroit-area suburban Currently, we have under construction a handicap-accessible home. We did this once a couple of years ago, a few years ago, and did not have a lot of success moving the property. In this particular case, we've identified a family who qualifies prior to the construction, and we're building a home for their purpose and their need. We have three demolitions that are in process. We're working on an energy-efficient renovation project. We're involved in the promotion of the community garden that's located on a vacant lot at Hancock and Armour Streets. We continue with our classes in education of homeownership and foreclosure, and we're involved in a couple of local programs, the Howard Street Neighborhood Program and HUD's Neighborhood Stabilization Program. And basically, that's, those were my comments this evening. If anybody is interested, we do have a number of homes that are available at the present time. The Port Huron Neighborhood Housing Corporation can be contacted. Their phone number's in the phone book, but I'll give it out here right now. You can contact us at nine-eight-four-nine-seven-thirty-six at any time. Again, we appreciate your contributions to our program. Any questions for Joe?
Mayor Muller?
Any comments? Councilmember Dorn?
Just quickly, if you could explain to council how it's staffed and how that relationship works with the city, and then the board that you showed on the screen, is that the entire board, or are there other board members on the board?
No, that is the entire board. As far as staff, as an organization, we don't have any paid staff. We rely on the city's involvement there, and that's why I made a point of referencing. Under the grants that we do get, it allows for the reimbursement of administrative expenses, and depending upon the volume of grants that we get in any given year will depend upon the amount of funds that we'll have available for reimbursement of administrative costs. So that's why it varies each year between the mid-twenty's to the mid-thirties. But yeah, that's how we feel we're reimbursing the city. We use part-time. We don't use a full-staffed person.
Thank you.
Mr. Vito, am I correct? Did you say you had five foreclosures in eighteen years?
Yes.
Maybe you should contact-
Well, they're not our forec- keep in mind, we don't own the mortgages on these properties. They're going to come to a-
Conventional.
But we feel by way of educating the homebuyer upfront and qualifying them, we've hit quite a bit of success along those lines.
Maybe you should contact Congressman Barry Frank in Massachusetts and show them how to do it. Any other comments, questions?
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Stevens?
On your new home, Joe, the handicap-accessible home, is that home being built for a resident of Port Huron?
I can't answer that question.
Thank you.
Councilmember Byrne?
Just like to say, I don't think I could describe a much better program than what you just described to us. Really appreciate what you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Vito. Appreciate you coming and sharing with us. Public hearings, public hearing number one.
I'd like to hear public comments on the establishment of the proposed Newman Center Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act District.
Public hearing number one is open. At this time, anyone wishing to speak in public hearing number one, this is the time to do so. You may only talk about public hearing number one. All we do is request that you give your full name and spell your last name for the clerk. Thank you. Public hearing number one is open. Seeing none, hearing none. Public hearing number one is closed. I knew she'd give the hint there. Public hearing number two.
Uh, first I can do the resolution.
Oh, resolution, I'm sorry. After public hearing number one is closed. Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Byrne, second.
Support.
Supported by Councilmember Dorn. Questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Clerk, please take your role.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Public hearing number two.
I'd like to hear public comments on granting an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption for the real property located in the Newman Center Oprah District at five-oh-three Andrew Murphy Avenue for a period of six years, beginning December thirty-first, two thousand and nine, and ending December thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen.
Public hearing number two is now open. Anyone wishing to speak in public hearing number two and number two only may do so. Request that you just give your full names while your last name for the clerk. Anyone wishing to address public hearing number Hearing none, seeing none. Public hearing number two is closed. Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lewandowski, second.
Support.
Supported by Mayor Pro Tim Fisher. Questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Clerk, please take your role.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Public audience, this is the opportunity for anyone that wishes to address the City Council in regard to anything that you feel is pertinent to the City Council. To do so, we request that you hold your comments to four minutes and that you give your full name and spell your last name for the clerk. Public audience is now open.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Administrator. Good evening, council members. I'm here tonight, much like I did at the County Commission meeting in July. I'm here to support the proposal of the county parks and recreation for the operation of the Lighthouse Park. I think that it would be a wise move on the behalf of the city of Port Huron to make such a move. If you only remember back a couple of years ago to the roundtables, the majority of the citizens said that we had to do something, and I think it's about time we did it. Secondly, what I'd like to bring up tonight, I'd like to issue a challenge to the audience tonight to stay for the second meeting tonight. You know, historically in nineteen seventy-seven, sixty-five point eight percent of Port Huron was owner-occupied homes. According to some of the comments that have been made lately, it could be fifty percent now, or less than fifty percent. You know, about nine years ago, we had a series of town hall meetings and stuff, and the residents of Port Huron expressed their feeling at those meetings that they would much rather have single-family homes in their neighborhood, because when people have single-family homes, they value their property more than the normal type of person who rents, or that type of thing. I think that, you know, whatever we do, we have to move in that direction. And my understanding, that's the concept of the second meeting. So I hope everybody stays. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the public audience?
My name is Joanne Runkford. I live at thirty-five forty Parkway Drive, apartment nine, and my last name is spelled R-U-N-A-P-E-R-D. I want to make a comment today about the picture that was in the Times Herald yesterday. It was a very, very nice picture of Reverend, the ceremony for Reverend John Portis at the Heritage Park. It could have been in color, a little bit larger. It wasn't on the timesherald.com, but it is a very, very nice picture. When, I want to also say that it's been a pleasure to the City Council and Mayor of Seven. Also, good evening Bruce Brown, City Manager, and Sue Childs, City Clerk. When Vice President Al Gore was here during the Bluewater area, in the Bluewater area for the new span of the International Bridge, the bridge was not an invite by residents here, but one that was sorely needed to have someone like that here, Vice President of the United States. And now with the invite of President Obama to Port Huron by residents here is not unfounded, but the reason other than the highest unemployment rate is not good enough, or a sitting president has never returned, never ventured here in St. Clair County. Like Bay Fest in Sarnia every summer, bringing in top names such as Fergie last year, solo singer Fergie, perhaps next summer, the Boats, Balloons Barbecue could add Bruce, Bruce Springsteen, and have Miley Cyrus on the same ticket, because her song, her song, "It's the Climb," is actually Port Huron. It's a struggle, and it says it all. Reinventing the wheel pertains not just to hybrid carts. Hybrids can become dinosaurs very fast, until a complete crossover brings something new, exciting, and revolutionary. That revolution could be ongoing as the Bridge Plaza Casino, SC Four becoming a four-year college, and yes, low-income and HUD for seniors disabled, and Habitat for Humanity, including healthcare. There were four articles back in two thousand and five Times Herald, and one is "Four People Keep Heat on Officials" by Joseph Dunwin, and that was March fourteenth, two thousand and five. It's got a picture of Ken Harris here. Good luck in the coming election. He's a retired postal clerk, and our mailbox was taken away by CBS in Pine Grove. The only closest one now is you have to drive to it to drop the mail in by Legends Bar. There is also another article, "Kim Prax Resigns From City Council. Six-year member quits after losing vote on federal grant application," and that was by Shannon Murphy of the Times Herald, and dated October eleventh, two thousand and five. SC Board's Code Faces Another Suit. Labor unions say rules restrict free speech, public discussion. And that was by Hillary Whitcomb Jesse, dated April twenty-third, two thousand and five. And then the final one, "SC Four faculty joins ethics lawsuit by Hillary Whitcomb Jesse, dated April twenty-second, two thousand and five." And why bring these four things up is, well, one, with the mailbox and postal situation the way it is. But I don't know if there's a conflict of interest for you guys doing anything with the housing and that, but there was a vote for Kim Prax not to be able to get the federal contract grant, and it was because David Hayes, David Hayes was not attending, and they had to have five vote, you know, votes, and there was four, four and one said no. But that's the pass, but since this is kind of related to HUD, I don't know if, I hope you can be objective for, you know, residents that are HUD for low-income and seniors. And then the ethics code, it was on the Times Herald today, online. A lot of times they put stuff on the internet on the timesherald.com and takes it off right away. There was something about the Charter Commission, talking about having an ethics code in the charter, so that's why I brought these two articles up. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in public audience? Now's the time to do so.
Good evening, council. Margaret Enright, and I just want to say something very positive about the city of Port Huron. I think we've had an awesome summer, not with the weather. I don't think you can do much about that. But we've had a busy summer, a very informative summer, lots and lots of things to do and still going on. So these people that are saying there's nothing to do in Port Huron, if they crawl out that rabbit hole and look around them, I'm sure they'd find lots of things. And don't forget, this weekend is a two-hundred-mile-long garage sale, Trailsdale or something. That's going right through our city, and Sunday is the float-down, and I hope to see each and every one of you there, because I know I will be. Don't shake your head, no, Mark. You're not afraid of the water. It's a good time. And Kim Harmer, I want to say thank you for your office and the awesome job you've been doing on the streets and cleaning up some of the mess with the branches and the dead sites that we've had to look at for a long time, and it's really starting to look good. So let's be proud of our city. We've got a lot to be proud of. We've got the beautiful blue waters and a lot of wonderful people around it. Let's just keep being positive, and maybe good things will always happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in public audience? Now's the time to do so.
Hi, my name's Bernard Ellery. I live in thirteen oh-seven Sixth Street. I'm relatively new in public speaking. Things that I want to say are very important to listen to, council. First of all, Mr. Vito, I don't want to pick on you, but I'd like the council to take a look at the dollar figures that purchased the homes that were revitalized, and then how much was put into them. Then take a look at the rest of the homes in the neighborhood and see what the state equalized value is. Because what has happened is, some of those homes sold for a buck thirty, buck forty, one hundred and forty thousand. Some of the homes around there were worth one hundred and twenty-nine, one hundred and thirty. Those homes will always be harder to sell. The older homes will be harder to sell than the newer ones. It's just basically. So when you do a neighborhood like Sixth and Union, White Street, you have to take in consideration, are you going to get banged for your buck, or is it actually going to hurt the real estate around it? But I'm not picking on them. The next thing I'd like to talk about is the Pathway House, okay? Pathway is a block away from my house. Every week, there's fire and rescue there. It's a nonprofit, don't pay taxes. Citizens that live there don't pay taxes. When it first opened up, it was supposed to be for battered women and their children. Now it's just become a homeless drop-out place. You know, if the fire and rescue have to come over there, and they may not come to your house because they're disbanded to something that's frivolous over there, don't you think that that's wrong? Don't we, don't we think as citizens that they should start being charged? Over a certain amount of the homeless shelters in the area are taking advantage of us. And when I say that they're taking advantage of us, it's fact that the police and rescue have to go constant to them. It's ridiculous. It costs me money, okay? It's all gotten out of hand. You got the Pathway, you got the Port of Hope, you got the club over on Sixth Street or Seventh Street. These people wander all day long. They throw things in my yard. You guys should come to my neighborhood and see what we have to put up with. Two years ago, July, I got hit by a drunk driver in my front yard. Luckily, I lived. The neighborhood has become unsafe. When we allow things like the Pathway, the Port of Hope, the homeless shelters to be blocked in one area, you're hurting the value of homes. You're hurting neighborhoods. How would you ever believe that you could change that over to a owner-occupied neighborhood instead of a rental district if you have that type of activity? I just hope that you folks take a look at what you're doing when you're planning things. Spread them out. Put the homeless shelters, soup kitchens by hospitals, okay? Close to medical attention, because those folks need a lot. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in public audience? Now's the time to do so. Now is the time to do so.
Hello, council members, administrators. I've only got a couple of things I'd like to talk about. My name's Darren Rushing, R-U-S-H-I-N-G. Just a couple of things on the agenda about the recommendation for the removal of logs and brush. I was kind of curious what the different bids that were accepted, and possibly, I mean, if it's not a, a large project, like if it doesn't need large machinery trucks, et cetera, like that, if, if we couldn't utilize something like community service to, to do something like that. I, I don't know if it's a beautification, or if it's a truly much larger project. And then secondly, with the agenda for the possible approval of taking care of the lighthouse, I, I noticed that we have the, the thing for the one-time grant and, and that, but what has been done as far as establishing the future care and restoration and the continuation of the lighthouse, and what has been considered as far as that goes, so that we can avoid this discussion in, say, another ten years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address public audience? Now is the time to do so. Hearing non, seeing none, public, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
I don't know if I'm addressing my group here or not, but I read the Times Herald on a daily basis, and if I can, I'd like to go back a few days on a front-page item that was in here, and just to quote, at risk of taking it out of context, from this article, it said, the current situat, this is in regards to the rentals, the rental percentage. If I can quote the article, it says, the current situation, quote, "All we can do is attract, is attract people we don't want." Another thing in that same article that caught my eye, and I'll quote it again, the article said, "Those people with long-term investments tend to have a better relationship with the community. Renters tend to be more transient. They don't take ownership in the community. They tend not to get involved in the community or have the same pride in the community." Now, this, all this improvement, I'm all, all for that, upgrading. Yeah, that's great, but the approach here bothers me, if you will. And I don't know, with the economic situation being what it is, instead of getting rid of low-rent housing, I think we should, and it mentions here also tearing it down, tearing down units, I think we should be looking towards possibly making more available. I mean, people are losing their homes, people are losing their jobs, getting their, their hours cut, medical expenses, foreclosures. I don't think we should be get, I think we should realize that when it says, these kind of people, we can't just kick them down the road to the next town, and then they'll kick them down the road. You know, I think the road should end here, and we should rethink this a little bit. And in closing, in Sunday's paper, there was one person that wrote into the Talk Back, and if I can read that just briefly, it was from David from Port Huron. He said, "Am I the only one offended by the comments of Mr. Bodee?" And from the Port Huron Area Landlords Association, he said, "Low-income housing must be stopped if the city is to be saved, because it only attracts the kind of people we do not want or need." I am offended by that. I consider it massively arrogant, disgusting, and elitist, and totally self-serving. Arrogant in that he's deciding what must be done now without consultation to save the city. Elitist in that he is condemning a whole group of people as not being worth the space they would take up. And self-serving in that as the head of the landlord association, he obviously has rental properties, and if low-income housing were stopped, his rental properties would be in more demand, and he would be able to raise his rents with them. The problem is not the level of rental housing. People would buy if they could, if they could. The problem is the loss of jobs that paid enough to let people buy, and that's the situation we're in. You know, even if somebody can get a job in this area, it's probably not, you know, paying well enough to buy a hundred and forty thousand dollar home, even with the, with the amount that the gentleman was suggesting, okay?
Thank you. Can we get your name, sir?
I'm sorry. Weinert, W-E-I-N-E-R-T, Robert.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to address public audience? Now is the time to do so.
Hello, my name is Diana Maxwell, and I live in Kimball. At one time, a long time ago, I was a renter too, and I've been a landlord over the years. I currently am not. I'm a realtor, and I think that we need to work on why people are going to want to live in the city of Port Huron, instead of doing the opposite and trying to restrict people's rights as homeowners, whether they can rent out their home or not. There are a lot of people who've lost their jobs, and even in all the townships right now, they can't sell their home, and they're renting it out. And if you take that right away from them, it would be like saying to me, I can't live in my home anymore, nor can I rent it out. It doesn't really seem fair to be able to take that right away from someone. As a realtor, we're here to protect people's rights. Now, if there's a way that we can turn the city around and make it more desirable for people to want to move into the city, I think that's a more positive approach. And how do you do that? Well, it's studying the way other cities have turned around, and part of our problem is our tax structure is so high at the, you know, thirty-eight mils, kind of, compared to the townships at twenty-six to twenty-eight mils, that when people want to buy, and then we sit down and tell them what their property taxes are going to be, along with the city income tax, then all of a sudden, it's a lot easier for them to decide they want to live in one of the townships. So what's going to make them want to live in the city is going to be the things to do, the feeling of rebirth of things going on, the excitement of being part of a city that's growing. And I, I think that it would be easy to say, well, we're going to limit the number of units. That's not changing, and that's not solving the problem. It's like cancer, saying that you're going to solve the symptom, but you have to get at what's causing it to be cancer in the first place. So I, I would just like you to think about that, and look at it as not another restrictive type thing. Enforce the code enforcements that you already have on the books, and let's try all together to try to make it the type of city that we all would want to live in, and not into, you know, something that's going to chase more people away.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in public audience? Now is the time to do so. Hearing non, seeing none, public audience is closed. Consent agenda. Motion.
Mayor Muller.
Mayor Proton Fisher.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Mayor Proton Fisher, second.
Support.
Supported by Councilmember Dorn. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne.
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn.
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher.
Yes.
Mayor Muller.
Yes. With the passage of the consent agenda, communications and petitions, number one, was approved notification from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission that they have received an application from Walgreen Company requesting a new SDM license to be located at sixteen seventeen Tenth Avenue. From the boards and commissions, number one, receiving filed the county board of canvassers report on the election results for the city council primary election held on August fourth, two thousand nine. From the director of finance, number one, notification that the annual conflict of interest statements have been received and reviewed, and no discrepancies have been noted. Resolution number five, confirming and declaring single lot special assessments in the total amount of four thousand one hundred and six dollars and twenty-five cents for sidewalk replacement. Resolution number six, confirming and declaring single lot special assessments in the total amount of one thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars for the cost of removing noxious weeds or unlawful gross or blighting factors. Resolution number eight, recommendation that the application from Smith Nichols Investment Corporation to transfer location of the two thousand nine B Hotel License business from twelve twenty-nine Seventh Street to four oh nine Quay Street, and to transfer classification to a Class C license be recommended for issuance by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. Resolution number ten, scheduling a public hearing for September fourteenth, two thousand nine, to hear comments on code case zero nine dash zero zero one, twenty-three twelve Fifteenth Street, to ascertain and determine whether it constitutes a nuisance as defined by chapter ten, section ten dash two eleven, and chapter thirty-four, section thirty-four dash three of the Port Huron City Code. Resolution number three, scheduling a public hearing for September fourteenth, two thousand nine, to hear comments on code case number zero nine dash zero zero two, fourteen thirty-three Beard Street, to ascertain and determine whether it constitutes a nuisance as defined by chapter ten, section ten dash two eleven, and chapter thirty-four, section thirty-four dash three of the Port Huron City Code. Resolution number twelve, scheduling a public hearing for September fourteenth, two thousand nine, to hear comments on code case number zero nine dash zero zero four, eleven thirty-six Lapire Avenue, seven zero two through seven zero four Twelve Street, to ascertain and determine whether it constitutes a nuisance as defined by chapter ten, section ten dash two eleven, and chapter thirty-four, section thirty-four dash three of the Port Huron City Upcoming events, August eleventh, the Charter Commission meeting at seven P.M. in room four oh eight at the Municipal Office Center. August thirteenth, Rockin' the River, the Randy Brock Group, five to nine P.M. in Kiefer Park. August fourteenth through the sixteenth, Antique Yard Sale Trail along M twenty-nine and M twenty-five from eight A.M. to five P.M. August fourteenth through the sixteenth, Majestic Cool Trail and Grand River Avenue Street Fair. August sixteenth, Port Huron Float Down starts at Lighthouse Beach at eleven A.M. August twentieth, Rockin' the Rivers at four thirty, main act performance by Red Hill at seven P.M. in Kiefer Park. From the city manager, number one.
Is a recommendation that the bid from S.A. Turello Incorporated for thirteen thousand dollars for removal of logs and brush at the Parks Forestry Cemetery Warehouse be accepted.
Motion.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember McCullough, seconded by Councilmember Byrne. Questions, comments, concerns, discussion?
Mayor Muller.
Councilmember Stevens.
I'd like an answer for the question that was put by Darren Rushing.
Mayor Muller and city council members. The question as to, is it possible to have community service workers do this work? The answer would be, no. This brush pile is an accumulation of brush that the forestry department has collected throughout the city during the last four years. The pile is approximately a hundred and twenty by a hundred and eighty feet in length, and ranges anywhere from ten to fifteen feet in height. The logs that are included are of a size that they begin to fill the yard up, and it becomes very difficult to, to bring additional trees, trees and branches into the yard for storage until we can remove those.
Any other questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Hearing non, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember McCullough.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne.
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn.
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Mayor Muller.
Yes. Resolution number one.
Is authorizing payments one through nineteen.
Motion.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Stevens, second.
Support.
Supported by Mayor Proton Fisher. Any questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Hearing non, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne.
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn.
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough.
Yes.
Mayor Muller.
Yes. Resolution number two.
Is approving St. Clair County assuming the restoration of the Fort Grasset Lighthouse and its outbuildings with certain conditions.
Motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mayor Proton Fisher, second.
Support.
Supported by Councilmember McCullough. Questions, comments, concerns, discussion?
Mayor Muller.
Mayor Proton Fisher.
The, I fully support this resolution. The lighthouse is a treasure not only for Port Huron and St. Clair County, but the entire state of Michigan, if not the country. We are looking at one of the oldest operating lighthouses, if not the oldest in the state of Michigan, and this is truly an asset to the entire community in this area that needs to be preserved and saved.
I would just like to answer Mr. Rushing's question, and I think Mr. Harris' question on this. Myself and Mr. Fisher met with Mr. Brose from the Recreation Department of the county, and with Mr. Groden, along with Mr. Brown, to discuss this matter. The city did not, we don't believe, has the resources to take care of maintaining the Fort Grasset Lighthouse, the millions of dollars that are involved. At this time, what we did is we talked to the county officials. We have a three hundred and seventy thousand dollar grant out there, which is a matching grant. Mr. Fisher and I stated that we would support the next resolution. We could not speak for the whole council, but that we would offer them that if they would take over the project. And the county, with their recreation fund, has decided that they would like us to, they would like to pursue that. So, it's not like the lighthouse is going to be moved from the city limits. It's going to still be up there, but to answer your question, the county plans on, if they support this resolution and adopt it, they will be the ones that will be maintained along with the Port Huron Museum. Councilmember Lewandowski.
I'd just like to thank the museum and the county and the city for all working guys. It's a perfect example of what the Parks and Recreation Millage was voted on for by the people.
Any other questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Hearing non, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Byrne.
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn.
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Mayor Muller.
Yes. Resolution, lost count, where am I? Three, resolution number three.
Is approving a one-time grant from the city of Port Huron to St. Clair County in the amount of three hundred and seventy thousand dollars for restoration of the Fort Grasset Light Station.
Motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mayor Proton Fisher, second.
Support.
Supported by Councilmember Lewandowski. Comments, questions, concerns, discussion?
Mayor Muller.
Mayor Proton Fisher.
Again, my comments, I could just put a ditto mark on what I said with the last resolution, but not only is this a treasure, but this is, this is a partnership, a unique partnership, between the museum, the city of Port Huron, and the county. This is truly a step forward in relationships with all three organizations, and the least we can do as far as our partnership is to provide the matching funds for the grant, to ensure that the Save America's Treasure Grant is used to save this tower and to save the lighthouse, not only for our generation, but for generations to come.
Any other questions, comments, concerns, discussion?
Mayor Muller.
Councilmember Stevens.
I understand that the lighthouse is a wonderful treasure, but matching grants can be matched by anyone. The museum can match this grant. Three hundred and seventy thousand dollars is the amount of money that has to be a match. We have had and continue to have a jewel in the middle of our community called McMorn. We have watched it fall down. The bricks are falling out of the facade at McMorn, and it needs repair. So when we talk about putting three hundred and seventy thousand dollars into yet another project, I cannot say I can go along with this. I do believe that this is a project that the county, the state, the federal government should preserve, as they have all told us, it must be preserved. But we are the lowest common denominator. We are the ones with the least money. When the Parks and Recreation Department Millage goes through with the county, the people that have, live in Goodell's, don't get an additional tax because the Goodell's Park is there. The people who live along the trail don't have to pay an additional tax because the trail is developed throughout our county. I cannot support this motion.
Further discussion, comments, questions, concerns?
Mayor Muller.
Councilmember Byrne.
Just doing the math a little bit, and far as Port Huron concerned, for the Parks and Recreation Millage, just going by taxable values and what the Parks Millage is, Port Huron pays approximately ten point one eight percent of the Parks and Recreation budget, yet this will be the first county park inside the city limits. By comparison, Fort Grasset pays seven point nine percent. I don't recall them being charged extra money to have a park foot there just recently. I don't recall them being charged extra money to have a park foot there just recently, and I'm sure that waterfront property wasn't cheap, et cetera. And so to me, I think we already pay our fair share of the Parks and Rec Millage, and this is just going for having our first county park inside the city. In addition, the city provides, oh, probably a couple dozen very nice parks that people from around the county come and visit. We don't charge the county anything for that. We do have a parking fee at a few of them, but for the most part, Port Huron, as far as Parks and Rec goes, we pay the largest share to the county, and we provide a lot of parks for everyone to use already. I don't think we need to give more money to this.
Any further questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Any other questions? Hearing non-scene, clerk, please, wait a minute, I want to make a discussion, a discussion. Actually, I missed my notes on the previous one. We had an option in there of appointing a council member, and we didn't do that, and in my notes, I meant to appoint Mr. Fisher, but amend it, but just to let, no, we'll have to come back and address that at a later date. But any other questions, discussion on the lighthouse? Hearing non-scene, clerk, please take your role.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
No.
Councilmember Byrne?
No.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. The clerk said we can go back and make a motion to appoint Mr. Fisher. I can't make a motion, but if someone else wants to make a motion to appoint Mr. Fisher to represent the city.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Dorn, second. Support by Councilmember Lee McCullough. Further discussion? Hearing non-scene, clerk, please take your role.
Question, point of order.
Oh, I'm sorry. Point of order.
Should I abstain myself from the vote, or?
No.
I'm not going to make this part of that resolution, I'll just make it a separate motion outside of that.
Okay.
Because you've already voted on the resolution.
Any further discussion on it? Hearing non-scene, clerk, please take your role.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Resolution number four.
Is approving the agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation for maintenance of the state trunk lines and bridges for the period October 1, 2009 to September 30, 2014, and designated Robin L. Berry as the maintenance superintendent on sections of state trunk line highways.
Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lewandowski, second.
Support.
Support by Councilmember McCullough. Questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Hearing non-scene, clerk, please take your role.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Resolution number seven.
Is authorizing the renaming of Nern Street from 28th Street to 32nd Street to John L. Portis Drive. This was postponed from the regular meeting of July 27, 2009.
So there's already a motion on the floor.
No, you have to bring it out.
All right. Need a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Dorn, second.
Support.
Supported by Councilmember Byrne. Questions, comments, concerns, discussion?
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Stevens.
I looked into the costs, and I wanted to address that because Audrey Peck had brought that up at the last meeting, and she had said, "Had we looked into the costs for people that would have their street name changed." I talked to some people who have had their street name changed, and I just wanted all of you to know that they said it is costly for the resident. You do have to change your checking accounts, your savings accounts, you have to change all of your addresses, you have to change your credit cards, all of your utilities, you have to change your licenses. There are costs involved. I am not saying that this isn't a wonderful thing to do. We have had a lot of people, and we polled the people on those streets, but I do want to say that I've been made aware of the costs. And having been made aware of that, I would like to suggest that while we act on this motion today, that we need to do a proper process and have a proper process for when people want streets named, and we need to set that up in some way that makes it official. Thank you.
Any further comments, questions, concerns, discussion? I did talk to the family after the last meeting, and the family basically stated that they didn't want anything named after Reverend Portis, but one of the family members did contact me, you know, if the council decides not to support it, they'll be fine with that. But they were concerned with the street in front of the church, the small section, so... Clerk, please take your role.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Resolution number nine.
Is authorizing the zoning administrator to issue a special approval use permit for a family childcare home, six or fewer children, at 1128 Wall Street, contingent upon the applicant providing proof of state licensing.
Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Byrne, second.
Support.
Supported by Councilmember Lewandowski. Comments, questions, concerns, discussion? I guess I have a question for Councilmember Lewandowski. You were on the planning commission?
Yep.
Any discussion?
Yes, lady came and does talk. She had, previously had her business there, and then she had moved, and then got remarried and had two houses, and decided to move back to the house on, the street here was Wall Street, I believe it is, and that was about all the discussion there was to it.
No neighbors or?
Nope, she said the neighbors were fine with it, and she was, when she told us it, and I went out and talked to them, but...
Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Hearing non-scene, clerk, please take your role.